Good evening, everybody. It's 7:30 on Thursday, October 24th for the selectment meetings for the town of Hingham. Our apologies for the delay, but we had a discussion. Those of you who have had experiences with lawyers know that good morning could be a long discussion, and it was very important that we have it, and I'll report on that later. This evening's agenda is to vote to appoint a permanent police patrolman, a discussion on liquor license fees, an update on the FEMA flood map, which we discussed at our last meeting, and a discussion on the budget guidelines that Ted issued to the department heads, coupled with a report back from the subcommittee chaired by Michael Barkley on the revisions to the financial policy. And I understand that the Red Sox are going to wait till we're done, but we are sensitive to that issue, and so we'll start with the meeting. So if I could call upon our chief, Mike Perino, to just bring up his recommendations to the board for the appointment of a police officer. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we did the interviews a couple of weeks ago, and as a result, they're concluding background evaluations to fill two prominent positions. As a result, I recommend Michael Dunleavy, who's number one in the civil service list, and James Brady, who's number two, to be appointed to the Hingham police officers. Michael Dunleavy is 30 years old. Michael's been a special police officer for Hingham for four years, has shown his abilities to handle law enforcement situations. Michael has participated in fire-arms training with our department, has attended yearly in-service trainings at Plymouth Police Academy for special police officers. Michael is presently seeking his degree in criminal justice at Quincy Junior College, and Michael's commitment experience working with the Hingham Police Department in the past four years will be useful in his future as a Hingham police officer. James Brady is 25 years old, living in Hingham. James has earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Bridgewater State College. James has done an internship with the Hingham Police Department in 2009. During this time, we got to know James and saw his commitment and passion to become a police officer. As you know, James is currently employed at the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant as a security officer, and speaking with James' supervisors, they described James as being a hard worker, reliable, trustworthy, and highly recommended James as a police officer for the town of Hingham. I wish I had four openings, because really, all four candidates did a good job, but unfortunately, we only have two. So I would recommend those two officers.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I just want to make an announcement. If anyone is recording this meeting, under Massachusetts law, open meeting law requires that you notify the board. That doesn't mean that we're going to deny you, just that the public needs to know that their presence and comments would be recorded. So if there is anybody recording the meeting...
[inaudible]
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else?
Elizabeth Ryan, Mr. Duncan.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, we just want folks to know. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the chief's recommendation?
I concur with Chief Perino. I wish we had four openings, and, Michael, third time's a charm.
Paul?
I have complete confidence in the chief's recommendations, and I look forward to seeing these two men serve as police officers for the town of Hingham.
Thank you. Initially, when we started this process, our intent was to restore the safety officer position, which we have done. And the chief approached us and asked for that permission to get that person identified. It has been our practice to take an experienced officer, an experienced officer, to move them into the safety officer position, and that's what we have done, and I think we announced that today, I am told.
Yes, we did. Officer John Maquart will be the starter today, doing Halloween safety.
Well, that's good. You can start him on Druigan's path, too. So we did that, but it was important, not only that we have this officer, but that because of a variety of issues, that we replace him and also find ways to take advantage of the opportunity, because the training schedule may not be there for other officers to get there when we need them. So in anticipation of that, with the agreement of the advisory committee chair, we have appointed both, or recommended the appointment of both. So with that as background, I'll ask my colleague, Mr. Healy, if he would be willing to make the motion.
Sure. I'll move to extend a conditional offer of employment to James Brady and Michael Dunleavy as permanent police officers for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following: A, successful passing of the required medical examination; B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test; C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process; D, successful passing of all other requirement for entrance into the police academy; E, entry into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to the payment of up to $3,000 recruit training fee; F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief; and G, any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidates fail to successfully complete all of these conditions, as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional employment, appointment shall be considered null and void, and to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are the candidates present?
I believe one of them is, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dunleavy is here.
Bring them up for the public to introduce. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. I thank both the chief and his deputy for their work on this effort, and we appreciate yet again your service to the town. Thank you all very much, those of you who are here, for that very momentous occasion.
That's nice.
We have a... The next item for discussion is something I just want to take the time. I didn't want to keep all those folks waiting. As I mentioned earlier, we just had an executive session to discuss pending litigation with Aquarian. I can let you know that the business litigation session of the Suffolk Superior Court has now set a schedule regarding discovery and experts. I can tell you that the town administrator and I, and the chairman of the Water Study Committee, John Asher, were in attendance Tuesday at the court session, and we were with the presence of our counsel, Kerry Ryan, where the schedule was set. This was a long process, but we are now in motion. As the town requested, the town set the schedule with expedited dates. The two issues that we raised were this was important to the town, and the second issue that we raised was the longer this takes, we all know the uncertainty that surrounds the financial environment we operate in, so we were anxious to get this expedited. So, for example, the schedule will require written discovery to be, needs to be completed by January 2nd, 2014. The town is required to disclose its experts and their report by April 15th, 2014. So it is important that the town comply with the court deadlines and get the necessary actions completed. Since this does involve litigation, we'll be not discussing the details of our strategy, and that was what the executive session was all about. However, there is one vote we need to take tonight, and I'll ask my colleague, Irma Lauter, to put that vote forward.
Make a motion to authorize special town council to retain the expert or experts as needed for the litigation pending against Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts Incorporated and Aquarian Water Capital of Massachusetts Incorporated.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I thank, my thanks to Mr. Ryan and to the town administrator for the work they did on this. There is a discussion that we had a week or so ago on liquor license fees, and one particular category of those, thanks to some very good work that our staff had done. And I guess I'll turn it over to the town administrator. We've asked for public input on that, particularly from those who would be impacted to any adjustment in this, and I'll ask Mr. Alexia Otis-Ted if you could give us a little bit of update on their comments.
We've received a written letter from attorney Michael Neese, and it's, his letter's in your packet. Attorney Neese represents a number of restaurants within Hingham, and has asked that you defer your decision for a period of a year and form a study committee to examine your decision. Other than that, it's no other new information.
If I recall my numbers correctly, there were 26...
26 established, 26 licenses. Currently, you're billing those 26 out at $2,000 per license. The proposal is to increase that to $4,000.
Okay. Any comments from my colleagues? Irma?
I know it's an increase, but it keeps us within the range of the other towns that have like numbers of restaurants and are a restaurant destination.
Paul?
I agree with Ms. Lauter. I think it's a reasonable increase under the circumstances.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Would you come to the...
You can either sit at the table or try to use that mic.
Thanks. I'm Mark Doherty from Square Cafe, and we love Hingham. Hingham's been really good to us, and we have a good business here. We think that doubling the fees is a little bit too much. We're willing to go some part. We think it's fair to go somewhere, but to double it, I think it's a stretch. I mean, to make ends meet in this business is really tough. It's a business of pennies and nickels to be profitable, and don't forget that when we opened up Square Cafe about 12 years ago, the shipyard was not here, Derby Street was not here, and that has, you know, we have done well, but we've flatlined here, and I think most restaurants probably have. And to, it's not like we have a turnstile clientele here where you have hotels and conventions and people coming in. It's the same group of people, and I think it's tough for us to double our fees here. Quincy, talks about the neighboring, Quincy liquor license is $2,600, so, and Quincy, per, the amount of licenses per the population of Quincy is, we have just as many licenses here per person as Quincy, so, I mean, apples to apples, we're, you know, almost, go to $4,000. That would be quite an increase from us, $1,400 more than Quincy, so, you know, it's just tough. It's tough making ends meet in restaurants. I mean, to pay bills, you get all kinds of, you know, things that you need to pay for, unexpected things, and why is the liquor industry, you know, why are we signaling out here to help? I mean, we're willing to help, but it seems that we're kind of being like, okay, let's go after them, 26 licenses times 2,000, it's 52,000. I mean, why can't other businesses help as well as the liquor licenses? So, you know, I mean, I think it's fair to raise it, but to raise it, you know...
Do you have another number in mind that you would consider?
I would say anywhere between 2,500 or 3,000, by 500 or 1,000 at the most, the very most, you know. I think that is fair, but you can't forget that Derby Street and Shipyard just takes it, just the slice of the pie gets thinner and thinner. It really does. And, you know, I do all the books at the Square Cafe, and you just struggle to make ends meet. You really do. You have to keep the prices, you know, pretty much the same, and you can't really go up in that. We're in an economic downturn here. People still haven't really opened up their pocketbooks, you know. But we're doing good. We love our community. You know, we try to give back. We try to keep the restaurant clean. We try to keep the outside of the restaurant clean and do our part as neighbors, you know, and we'd like to continue to do that, and we think that it's fair to increase it, but just not by twofold.
Okay. Can I ask, you made reference to it in your comments about business. If you were to go back to 2008, when we were doing, all doing much better than we are today, would you say your business is up, down?
From 2008? It's getting, it's getting back to where that was then.
But it's not yet.
Not yet, no, no. Yeah. It's not, yeah.
Irma, any questions?
I mean, you have things like tonight. I mean, to be honest with you, between the Red Sox games and the last, you know, week and a half, that's easily cost us $12,000 in business, easily.
Because of the games, take people at home.
Saturday night, you lose $4,000 in business, you know. I mean, tonight, you know, I mean, I left tonight and someone took over. I paid a hostess to come in, you know, but tonight we'll be down easily, $1,500, you know. So it's just tough. I mean, you can see a restaurant that's doing well, that has crowded, there's people in there, you know, but after you pay everyone, you know, after you pay the help, you know, help, I mean, line cooks used to be $12, $13 an hour, now they're $18, $19 an hour. It's just, you know, the produce is up, everything is up, you know. And we understand that, you know, things do go up, and we think that it's fair that, you know, that you ask people that have liquor license, say, yeah, okay, we need to up the fee a little bit, but we just think by twofold is just, okay, can we, can we go a little bit, and then maybe next year review it again or something like that? I think that's only fair. You know, I mean, if anyone here was hit with a bill that was twice as much as it was the year before, wouldn't you say, wow, that's a lot, you know?
Paul?
Paul?
Nothing.
Any comments from the public? Anybody else who would like to? Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, selectmen and women, thanks for having us tonight. I was one of the, one of the people that worked hard to put together the consortium with the letter that was presented today. The only one that was missing that was admitted by accident, mistake, because of the hurricaness of getting it together was Jim Hodgson from Eat Well.
Okay.
Toscas and Stars and Cafe Toscas. When we, I opened that letter last week, it was like getting blindsided.
Excuse me, could you...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dave Littlefield from Salsas.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. So last week, when I opened that letter, it was like getting blindsided and sort of getting, getting hit from behind unexpectedly. Our business, as was just alluded to, is a rough-and-tumble business, and I think a lot of the people outside the business doesn't really understand the day-to-day scope and scale of what has to happen to be successful. This year has been exceptionally tough year. It started in January, when we got wiped out a whole weekend, when the governor shut down the roads. The following weekend, we lost another Saturday to another snowstorm. Our beloved Bruins, the season ran late, so everybody sweet-spotted, the spring, when you get busy and get reinvigorated and people come out, we lost, I think, five or six Saturday nights through the Bruins playoff run. And then June rained all month, and July, it was 100 the whole month. Everybody here lost compressors. I told me three weeks to get a compressor to get my AC functioning properly. I watched people walk out every day. It was a horrendous process. So, and now we're in the Red Sox World Series, okay, and we all lost another four or five Saturday nights again. Those are lost dollars between the snowstorms, these playoff games, and so forth, that are never coming back. So to get a bill like that with 100% increase without any notification, in a five-week turnaround, is astronomical and just really unfair. We are in this room, we're all, we're entrenched in the community. We're an important, we're part of the fabric of the community. We deal with all kinds of stuff. We do the Taste of Hingham, which is for charity. We also have multiple, multiple people and coming through the door, groups and organizations looking for our support, and a lot of us do it. We don't say no, because we feel a sense of pride of being here, and we like to build win-win relationships with everybody that comes to our door shop. So that's my feeling. I think I also own and operate a Salsas in South Boston. We've been there 15 years. My license is $2,900. So, you know, with more restaurants developing in the town, it's almost like we should revisit this and maybe go down, rather than 100% increase with five-week notice.
How do you feel about the proposal that the Square Cafe made?
Which is talking about a nominal increase at some point? I would, a nominal increase, I think we could, everybody has gone up, you know, fruit, just everything that we buy has gone up. So organically, everything does go up, but not such a leap, you know? I mean, a percentage 10, 15, 20% after January 1st. We know what's coming. We can budget for it. It's probably inevitable, but 100% increase with six weeks is just unfair.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
I just want to make sure everybody that wants to speak has spoken, and then I'll...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. My name is Christian Thompson from Liberty Grill, 8th North Street in Hingham, and I dropped off a letter on Thursday. You received it?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. I got to say, I agree with everyone's, Mark's points of view, David's points of view, but one of my, one thing that sticks out with me is that on August 1st, 2009, the state implemented an increase in the sales tax to 6 and 1/4%. And that also had a variable for the local communities to charge an additional 3/4 of a percent for meals tax. On the next town meeting in 2010, the town voted to opt that, and it was implemented in July 1st of 2010. And calling the accounting department the other day comes to my attention that in the fiscal year 2012, $600,000 was generated by the restaurants for the town of Hingham. And, you know, I'm not going to ask what was done with that money, what do you do with that money, but putting that together for three and a half years, that's probably around $2 million. Now, one of my concerns is that I feel like, I feel like we're colleagues in this together, that we are a vehicle at your dispense to generate funds for the town, and I'm all for it. I'm all for Hingham. I'm all for businesses. I'm all for restaurants. It's all, it's all great. It's good. It's what we want, but that's an awful lot of money. I'm going to disagree with Mark right out of the gates and say, not only do I disapprove of an increase, I think it should be rolled back to the 2005 rate of $1,500. We, if you add another restaurant, which sooner or later is going to happen, that generates $1 million in revenue, that's going to be $75,000 directly generated by that restaurant through the meals tax for the town of Hingham. That's an awful lot of money, and, you know, I'm not going to ask what you're doing with the money. It's all going to the good cause, I'm sure, but, you know, increase, I'm not for it.
You raise a good point, and when we voted the meals tax, we very carefully said it's not going to be for the operations of the town. It's an alternative, and I'll let the town administrator comment on this, we did not use it for any, it's in the bank, is where the money is. And the second thing I just want you to be aware of is that about 67% to 70% of the people who pay that tax don't live in Hingham, yet we incur the expense of making sure that they're safe and secure, and I can tell you, I used one of the restaurants a week ago, and we now have a walking officer in the shipyard that we didn't have before, because that's necessary because of the business that it generates. So there is an expense to the town because of your business activity, and what these fees attempt to do is offset those expenses, because, because you're successful, we incur an expense, and we're very good, happy about that.
Sure, sure.
It's a good thing, but what we try to do is that the taxpayers who don't drink or participate in the restaurants shouldn't have to pay for them, shouldn't have to pay for that police. So that's the reason the meals tax was offered, and since I can attest, since I grew up in New York City, where the meals tax is 18%, that's my fear. We ain't going there, as far as I'm concerned, but it is something to offset the expense that our chief and others incur to provide the services that your clients should expect to feel safe and secure. So that's...
If you want to just clarify on the meals tax, the town of Hingham has not spent a penny of the meals tax that it's collected in the last three fiscal years, and all of the money is earmarked for tax reduction across the board, including to all business, all business and consumer residents within the town.
Okay. Is, what is done with that money, is that open for debate?
Yes.
It will be a town meeting.
Okay.
We can't take the money out without town meeting, two-thirds of them?
Correct, and the intention of, you know, last year, the town, the board went to town meeting and got passage of an article to allocate that meals tax to tax relief, and my understanding is that that's the plan this year to...
Well, it's nice to be able to, to be able to have that money in the bank. I know I don't, and that's...
Any comments?
I'd echo the chair's observations with respect to police coverage. I mean, I think the consumption of alcohol, it goes beyond question that the police have to grapple with the problems of that, and the courts routinely ask people where they last consumed their last alcoholic drink, public or private, and if it's a public one, they have to identify it, and there's licensing ramifications for those establishments that overserve. And I'm certainly not implying or suggesting that, you know, one of those, or anybody in this room is one, but I am saying that the burden on the police force that we have is added to by simply dealing with the consequences of alcohol consumption. We're trying to offset some of those costs with a, I perceive, as a modest fee increase, you see it as unfair across the board, but there's no consensus within the group that's spoken here tonight. One gentleman sees it's reasonable, just not so much, but, I mean, we have to, I, I think we were undercharging the permitting fees for years on the planning board. I know Salsas came in. Where is he? You know, we did a lot of time analysis on that project. We do a ton of work on these different restaurant applications that come in, figuring them out. That's a lot of town resources, and, you know, are you calling the police when you need them? Do they come?
Absolutely.
Do you hire a detail they have down there? No. But you know that the police forces are reliable and dependable.
I'm not here to question the police force.
Right, but we're paying for that.
Absolutely.
So we're trying to spread that cost out.
Were these, were these things taken into consideration when we started increasing the number of liquor licenses in town, which exceeded the number of liquor licenses per capita, set by the state? I mean, we should have things in place here. If we're going to start expanding liquor licenses in restaurants, which I'm all for, I mean, do we have the infrastructure to support that, those moves?
That's, that's an excellent point, and the question, the answer to your question is yes. You know, Hingham happens to be a restaurant destination, and as a result of that, that required, as I just mentioned, putting additional officers at the shipyard as a result of that activity, which, by the way, generates other revenues. The state, however, only gives us certain rules. We do not get any of your income. You know, you pay a state income tax, and that goes to the, that goes to the state for their use. The only vehicle we have at the moment is this, is the meals tax.
State income tax?
Yeah.
Meals tax?
Meal, no, no, no. When you file taxes for your business, that goes to the state.
Sure.
Hingham gets kind of indirectly that money, but there's no money specifically that comes back to Hingham to reimburse us for your success. We have to cover that as part of the general course of being here. So what we've tried to do is be in the middle of the road for our 20-town comparison to make sure that our taxes are reasonable, and this is one of those fees that we charged that was out of whack. So the question is, we like to be around the middle of the road. We like to be in the middle of the road on everything we do, and I'm talking to a former advisory chair who can testify, that's what we do. We don't like to, we just want to make sure our expenses are covered. So that was the intent of this, and that's why we put this out, to make sure we're in, we didn't change any of the other li- to make sure we're in, we didn't change any of the other license fees. This is the only one that was significantly out of course. Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
Wouldn't you look at, I saw in the article in the Hangham Journal, wouldn't you concentrate more on the, our immediate demographics than, say, Andover? Or Canton? Or, you know?
Well, historically, we use 20 towns to compare ourselves across all aspects of government. And we've used this list for about 30 years. So it's something we feel comfortable. It's a combination of demographics local, but also demographics regional that we feel comparable to.
Sure, sure.
And that's why we like to do it, because you don't want to get out of whack for obvious reasons. And at the same time, you want to make sure that the people who are causing the expense contribute to it.
Sure. And one more point. That money you said that's generated by that 3/4 of a point meals tax, you say we're just, you're just sitting on that right now?
No, we're giving it to tax relief. We gave some of it to tax relief. So we substituted one portion of our budget that would have otherwise gone to, 89% of our budget comes from residences. So to give them some relief for the increased costs that we incur, we use that money to help offset those tax rates. And you're right, it's a significant amount of money. But that's why the state allowed us to do it. And our charge is to make sure we don't go crazy with it, that we're careful and judicious with it. And we try to manage our costs, which is what we've been doing for years, for, at the same time, but making sure we have available to us other revenues to minimize the tax impact on citizens.
Wouldn't maybe using some of those funds to, let's say, maybe hire another police officer? Wouldn't that be a good resource? To use, a good way to use that resource?
I think a decision was made at the beginning of the discussion about whether or not to add a new fee and therefore a new revenue to the town. When the discussion was at a town meeting regarding the meals tax, folks did not want to see that added to the operating budget. And so the idea was that that money would be used for things, capital items, or liability reduction. Or, in this case, what the board has settled on is tax reduction. And just one correction for the chair. It was, it's for the entire property owners of the town. So businesses and residences will share equally as a proportion of their total value of their property in the, the reduction of, of property taxes from the meals tax. And then the one, the one slight carve-out is, we did, the board did recommend a town meeting, which was approved by town meeting, to increase the tax work-off program for about $20,000 of the $600. A very, a fairly nominal amount to try to affect people at the lowest stratus of the economic cycle. One other point, the board's in the middle of discussions with a tax classification group that is looking at whether or not town should split the tax rate and charge business and commercial property at a higher rate than residential property. And the feeling there has been, as it seems to be settling in, is, no, that's not the better way to handle tax policy, because there's a very marginal increase to residences and a dramatic increase to businesses. And so I think, it would be a shame to characterize the board in any way as unfriendly to business, because I think a number of their, their activities over the years, certainly while I've been here, have been very positive. I know this is a big increase. In part, there hasn't been an increase in six years, seven years. So, you know, that's another issue that I'll be bringing to the board, that increases need to happen more frequently, so they're not such sticker shocks. If you didn't increase your property taxes for seven years, and then you sent the property tax bill out to people, you'd have a lot bigger room, a crowd in the room. So I think those are things that we're gonna have to look at as we go forward.
I think on the meals tax, and you're, you see this in your own businesses, the decision that was made jointly by the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen to keep it out of the operating budget was that you can't count on it. Because as the economy cycles, people are gonna either go out to eat more, or they're not. So it's not a continuing revenue stream. I mean, it's very healthy right now. But if we use it to add a police officer, or a teacher, or a firefighter, that's a permanent add.
Sure.
And as the meals tax ebbs and flows, we would have to find money elsewhere to offset that. But I think everybody brings up very good points, that this is a short timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your discussion. Is there anyone else who has a comment?
Hi. My name is Vincent Ericetti. I'm the Executive Director of the Restaurant and Business Alliance, which probably sounds better than it is, because what I do mostly is just research. We're a statewide trade association, obviously, looking to support the health and wellness of restaurant and hospitality industry in Massachusetts. I just want to start out by saying, I have a, I have a lot of friends that are on school committees and Boards of Selectmen. And towns are a little different, and they, they have felt the pain over the last seven, eight years. My wife's on the school committee. I hear it every Monday night after she gets home. At the same time, I have to be honest and fair when I look at a doubling of this fee for, for a town like Hangham. Now, as with all things in government, they go up. And obviously, if you're going to add something like a public, a public employee, it's a yearly cost. It's not, it's not stagnant, it's not one time. At the same time, I do have to look at some of the towns that got compared to Hangham. And, you know, on, on paper initially, they may look similar. But two of the towns were Wellesley and Needham, which are both dry towns. Needham actually just changed, I think, five months, four months ago, five months ago. So it has to be considered. It also should be considered that their populations are larger, and they do have more traffic going through their towns, more of a commercial base, which definitely helps their, their lunch businesses. And also, you know, Wellesley, Wellesley has Blue Ginger, which right now is, you know, considered one of the top restaurants in the country. But not much else. And, you know, what is there is good, but not much else. Some of the other communities, such as Concord, which again, on paper, looks like a good comparison, they, they have a lot more traffic and a ton of commercial business that people really don't know about, because they just happen to be a large, based on geography, they're a large city. And most of their commercial business is in the outskirts. And a lot of the restaurants that serve those places are lunch, lunch-only. So I did want to bring a few of those things up. I also wanted to mention, restaurants like no other business has really received a perfect storm of very, very difficult conditions. You're already talking about a very small profit margin for any industry. You know, 7% to 10% is considered a success. And that's on investing $1 million that you don't get to touch while you have the business. You're starting to see general managers as an industry grow, because a lot of people are just selling their business and going to work for larger companies. Not to expand this too far, but if you look at Massachusetts, we're very fortunate, we're very lucky. Roughly 65% of our restaurants are locally owned and operated, even franchises. If you go to, say, Florida, everything is in Applebee's. Applebee's isn't donating to local sports teams when they're doing raffles. They're not donating to local charities when they're asked, because it's corporate, and they gotta go through corporate, and they gotta send it out to Nevada, or wherever the hell they're, they're based out of. And you just can't get an answer. Food costs are skyrocketing. If Google corn, I mean, it will blow your mind. And I, like I said, a lot of what I do is research, so I have to read this. And corn is just the beginning of it, because a lot of livestock is fed from corn. It's, it's, it's a, it's a cycle. Sports teams was our, were already touched on, whether we are a four-season state. A lot of these things really do hurt. And you, you just can't, you can't plan out in five weeks that you're gonna have an additional $2,000 cost.
Again, I... Do you have an opinion on the proposal put forth by one of your members?
I'm not sure that they're a member, but one thing that I would suggest is pick something that is not arbitrary. And again, I'm not using the word arbitrary defensively. I'm just saying, pick, pick something that is not arbitrary, such as, you know, 5% for five years. Or something along those lines where you can predict, and they can predict, so that you can work together on it. You know, one of the other sidebars that I didn't think was really clearly mentioned was property taxes. Businesses like, a great example is Almanove, because they didn't exist, and now they exist. And so your property taxes that you're receiving from them are definitely increasing along, along with your costs. And that's, that's management, and I understand it, it happens.
Let me just...
I do understand that it's not as cut, as dry as that.
Wait a minute, let me just make something so people understand. The Tax Classification Committee looked at that. Business property taxes have not increased as fast as residential property taxes. Because you have other components that the business, that residents don't have. And our computation of your, of your property tax is an income component. So if you don't make money, we can't, we can't raise your taxes.
That is true, but at the same time, there are other intangibles, such as jobs created. Say, again, and I, and that's why I said to you, I understand it's not a one-to-one. It's very difficult to compare apples to apples. That's why I was very careful with my wording when I was comparing Hangham to, say, other cities that were mentioned in those studies. Because I do realize there are a lot more components. And that's why I tried to bring up as many of them as possible, so that the discussion could be fair. And so that moving forward, it could be looked at. Just, again, a little bit more measured in terms of planning. You know, one of the, one of the stories that never gets told are businesses that don't open because of proposals like, like doubling a fee. Now, again, I'm not criticizing it as a proposal. I'm not saying do it or don't do it. I am saying don't do it, but you understand. But I do want to suggest that you look at, look at a few intangibles, such as, one thing that we've seen in Boston. Every single surrounding community around Boston, the restaurant community in particular, has been booming. Because you get the proximity to Boston without the regulations and fees and burdens. There are literally, you go over the border from, from Boston into Watertown, and you see nine restaurants. And 10 years ago, there were two. Things, things like that do happen, they do occur. And when you are in an area where Wamuth, you know, they're gonna be hungry for business. They're gonna say, you know what? If, if we need to be a little aggressive, we will be. Again, you know, there is only so much you can build out. And as someone previously said, sooner or later, you are competing for the same dollars. But it is not as cut and dry as let's double it, because, you know, this round hole, this round peg goes into this round hole. It's, it's not as cut and dry as that. One, one thing that I would suggest, just as a complete sidebar, and I understand that the meals tax does not go straight into your operational budget. If you just increase the business that all of your restaurants are doing by 10%, you will roughly get $60,000. Again, I understand it's not a one-to-one comparison. But one of the things that we as an organization often say is, now that the meals tax, the local option meals tax has been implemented in, I think, 68% of communities, look at restaurants as partners. Because many of the other communities haven't, haven't done what you've done and set it aside. But they're your partners now. One business, if you, let's say you double it, and one business says, I'm leaving, I'm moving to another town. Overall, that's gonna be a net loss. It's just something to consider. And again, you know, I do understand I'm an outsider. I have eaten at Stars since I was five, I think. But that's because I have family in the area. But it is something to think about. There are other ways to grow revenue together. I know that, just as an aside, Newton is probably not a one-to-one in comparison. But the mayor of Newton, Setty Warren, is always happy to talk about these things. He's done some very interesting things. And he's been able to grow that, the restaurant industry in Newton very quickly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Oh, one, one aside, this is completely separate. Suffolk University earlier this year did a study on whether people are eating out more or less. Statewide, it's less by about 48%. When you remove Boston, it's less by 58%. It is, it is still going on. Because I know that early, you were asking how the recession has affected people. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name's Steven Slitchus. I'm from Burton's Grill in Hangham.
Okay.
First off, I'd like to say to the chief, you're doing an amazing job. And I appreciate you guys. I do see you in my parking lot all the time, and I do see the presence, and I appreciate it. And I get what this is all about. The only thing that I'm here for is that, I just got the letter on Saturday. And in the letter, it didn't say anything about a meeting. And I got a call about maybe a couple hours ago, saying that tonight, you guys are gonna take a vote on it. So as I left my wife at home for my one day off to have dinner, I decided to come and spend it with you guys. I understand what you're gonna do, and I get it. And as some of the guys in the back room would say, it's too much. I would agree with the gentleman over here with the Square Cafe. I just think it's, you know, it's steep to double it. You know, if you were a guest at my restaurant, and you came in and got a bottle of wine for $10, or $20, or $30 on Friday night, and then came in on Saturday night, and I charge you, double it, I think you would probably stop coming to my restaurant. And I think this is a really sticker shock. You made a great point, because your point should be, you know what? You gradually do it. How much that's gonna be, I don't know. That's up to everyone to come up to a, to a bottom line that's gonna help the town of Hangham. I can say, if we do double it, that it's not gonna, it's gonna hurt the restaurant. And it's gonna impact all the charities that we donate to. Because that someday, we gotta find something out. It will probably impact how much people that we hire, how many people work in the restaurant. And I'm lucky and blessed, because I work for a corporation. You know, down in Burton's and the Derby Street shop, it's been a great, great experience. And I've been, I grew up in Quincy, and I've been down there for the last eight years. And I can tell you something right now, it's wonderful. And like I said, the chief has always been there, and he's been a great friend. But a sticker shock is getting double on it. And that's just something that's just, it's a hard pill to swallow. I'm sure if you had a, if you are businesses, and someone came in the next day and pounded a double on you, you'd be a little sticker shocked too. And I just don't think that's fair. I would probably say, and a lot of these guys, and they make great points, because a lot of these guys are single owners. And they're trying to keep their business up there. But to turn around in five weeks, because the budget, you know, basically, we're in November right now. We're starting to write our budgets right now for next year. And the next thing you know, you're gonna get whacked with an extra $2,000 that you didn't anticipate. It's gonna hurt somebody. It's definitely gonna hurt the community, because, you know, when you do do fundraises, and you do do the donations, all that stuff's gone now. All that helping out, because now you need to chase an extra $2,000 you didn't have in, in your budget for this year. So I just think the timing's, the timing's tough. I would agree with you. I think if you do it a little bit, you know, hey, go up, increase, increase, you know? So we see it. You know, I think that's, I think that's fair. I think increasing it, I, I get it. You know, something, I, I see it, because I'm, I see them in my parking lot every day, and I'm lucky and blessed. I work in a great community that cares to make sure that guests leave our establishments in, in great condition, and there's no problem. When I pick up the phone to call an emergency number to get somebody down there, they, they respond, you know? And I get it, and I appreciate it. And you guys do a wonderful job. I'm very proud to work in Hangham, very proud to say that. The one thing is, is just a sticker shock. That's my only concern. And if you're gonna ask me a price, this poor bugger, you guys laid him out there, because next thing you know, you're gonna see a news coming around here. We're gonna lynch mob on this poor guy down here. You know? I can't say what, what the amount is. I'm sure a lot of us would like to say, don't do it. I get it if you're gonna do it, because like, the cost of meat's going up, like everybody's saying, the cost of produce is going, going up. We see it every day in our life. We see it more than I think everybody else sees it in this room. Because we sell food. You need food to live every day. We can tell you, when you go to the supermarket, what's gonna be in that supermarket, and how much it's gonna cost. And people don't see it like we see it, because we sell food. You know? And we know it goes up. I just think doubling it is, is, is a tremendous shock to everybody that hasn't planned on it. That's why I think shelving it could help, but I understand. You guys have, you guys have got a tough decision to make. You know? And I would definitely agree with you. If you're gonna do it, then be, you know, don't let, don't wait eight years to do it, or six years, or...
Well, unfortunately, right now, we're in the process of trying to back up to this years.
year. I just thought, I want to clarify a couple comments for the board, if I could, Mr. Chairman, to be real brief. You know, the selectmen, you just hired two new officers. I know, talking with the chief, that one of the big reasons we're hiring those officers is because of the activity that we're seeing in the evenings, late at night, a lot of times after some of the establishments close. I'm not going to single any particular establishment out, but it's not just ours, it's others. And, you know, that cost is going to amount to about $150,000 a year. Right now, 90% of that cost is being borne by the residents in the community. The residents in the community are coming back to the board, and we're seeing this through the tax classification studies, saying, you know, our taxes have increased, our values have increased dramatically over the last 10 and 20 years, but yet we can show you statistics that say, on the business side, those values haven't changed. They've stagnated and flat. And in some cases, people are paying less in taxes on the business community side, property taxes. And some of you may not be seeing it because you may lease. So you may see it in your rent, I don't know whether your rents have increased. So, you know, this is an approach to the board to try to allocate scarce resources and meet the demands that we need in the community. I know it's sticker shock. You know, we've been through the sticker shock before. We were there at the country club seven years ago when no one raised rates for a dozen years, and all of a sudden, you needed to raise them dramatically to meet the costs of that operation. So, you know, I wanted to clarify my comments were meant to be on a go-forward basis. These need to be, once you've adjusted it to the levels you think are appropriate, you need to be monitoring them and you can't let it go five or six years.
We probably need to look at all of our fees and charges again.
Let me, let me, in the interest of this evening, because some of you are here and can hear baseball bats in the background, so that's not to belittle either the discussion or the comment. I think what I would suggest to my board, if they would agree, that why don't we take this input, that was the intent, in putting the discussion out there, and we got it. Let us table that, this issue, and I'll talk with the town administrator and he'll socialize it with my colleagues, that at some future date, we'll decide what the gradual increase might be, if that's where we end up. I think that's the message I heard this evening. I don't know if the other, there is the cost that we have to factor in, and that's how do we, how do we deal with that?
Can we ask the town administrator perhaps to give us maybe an alternative proposal, taking into account what several people have said tonight in terms of a gradual, a more gradual increase?
The sausage guy would like to say something.
The legal license renewals have to be sent out, they have to be, legal license renewals have to be signed by the end of November, or they consider a new license and each one would have to start all over again.
Okay, so that says in another week or so. We meet again-
We'd have to do this on the 7th.
The 7th, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to have-
Come up, the folks can't hear you at home.
I just want to have some point of clarification about our budgets and what we should have, you know, an idea to plan for. We're talking about four or five weeks away.
Well-
Just figure four. So planning on four, just hopefully-
Just figure four for now.
And hoping probably you can hold a grand slam?
And we're still talking.
But we hear, we hear you.
We hear you. We don't want to rush to a decision without taking this input. We had a statistical analysis that came to us that triggered this discussion. Now we have the business side, so-
Well, at the time, I understand, it's November 30th, the check-
Yeah, so it'll be before, well before then.
Okay.
Is there-
Guys-
Who are you, sir, if you just-
My name's Jim Hodgson, I'm from Eatwell.
Oh, okay.
Who, we own Stars and Tosca and Cafe Tosca. We've been a business since 89. And like I said, Stars, Tosca and Cafe Tosca, so we're talking about a fair amount of money here. So is there any way that you guys could give me an idea of, because I'm, you're talking about $12,000 here, that I have to come up with in a couple of weeks?
You have to come up with six.
More.
You have to come up with six more.
Six more, yeah.
Yes, not 12. You have to come up with either six or-
You're in for six anyhow, right?
Yeah, I understand.
It's, and you know, the other thing too, it's like, I don't want to get, you know, I know that everybody wants to get out of here, but I look around this room and these are the people that work here. I'm in my restaurant, he's in his restaurant, I go down to Burton's, he's there. Christian's there.
Okay, I think we gave you a path forward. We're not going to vote tonight, okay?
Fair enough. And I just want, I want to just make sure that we all understand what we're talking about. I've been there for, you know, we've been there for 25 years.
I know. I know I've said it.
And, you know, I know you all have been to the restaurant and we certainly appreciate our business. And it's about Hingham, you know? And it's a great town. And we all work hard.
What would you say to the resident that comes to us and says you weren't paying enough to begin with? And now's the time to level it off in fairness.
Well, in fairness, I mean, you say in fairness.
It's a rhetorical question. That's what we've got to answer.
The responsibility is on who? The responsibility is that, because you guys haven't raised it in six years, all of a sudden, you're going to increase it by 100%?
We understand.
We understand the message.
I know, I'm just-
No, the question is-
Chief posed the question, I'm trying to answer it, that's all.
We have statistical data that we can look at to see the impact that this might have. And I'll ask the town administrator, and we can have that discussion. You've given us some very good input tonight. We have the cost impact of the police and other services that we have to provide you. And we want to make sure that we treat that, and that's in consideration with the financial impact is on each individual business. Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Okay.
I just wanted to say that-
Could you tell us who you are, please?
Tony from the O.C.
Okay.
I just wanted to say the same thing, I mean, just a double would be a real burden on our costs and all, but we do donate to the schools and charities and the police department every year on our own, without being solicited, along with solicitation when we get the phone calls. And so we do pay a town, you know, donate.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That's good. Okay, we'll table this discussion for the moment. And I thank you all for your very candid and enthusiastic comments. The purpose of these discussions is to do that. That's how we work. Unlike Washington, we don't go on strike. We're here and we're trying to deal with this. There are some days, I think my colleagues and I would say we'd like to go on strike, but it's not because of the money, I can assure you. So I think your comments were well and we'll take them seriously and we'll, I'll ask this town administrator-
We'll have to take it up on November 7th, if the board intends to, because, you know, we have to get the license renewals out.
That's, that's right, so we've got to-
Will that be welcome?
Oh, of course.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
How much will that be?
7 o'clock. Now, and there will be an agenda on the town website as to what time this particular, hopefully we won't have another legal hearing beforehand, so we'll keep to the agenda. Okay. Thank my colleagues for their patience. Mr. Town Administrator, let's get to the FEMA flood maps.
Sure. The advisory committee approved the transfer on Tuesday of $40,000 to have the town begin entering into review of the FEMA flood maps. We have two proposals in hand. We do not intend to solicit any others. We feel these are the two firms that, GZA Associates and Woods Hole.
Ted, could you just repeat it? The press couldn't hear the discussion, just quickly.
Sure. We received, the advisory committee approved the transfer of $40,000 on Tuesday night for the work related to petitioning FEMA for a, an LOMR, which is an acronym for flood map revision. And we're evaluating two firms, GZA Associates, a firm that conducted the 1986 flood map designation, and Woods Hole Institute, myself and the community planning department. The team leader on that is Abby Pierceall, it's conservation agent. We should have a contract in place with one of the two firms, hopefully by the end of next week, and a work schedule in place. I think that's about it.
How do we get this message out to the residents?
I've asked Abby as team leader to work on a communications plan for delivery of this to everybody. There's a lot of word of mouth. We're updating the webpage. We updated bulletin board out front. And we've invited some of the residents, Mr. Harling, as you, the warden all knows, has been working very much on this, and we've invited them into the equation. And then, of course, I would look to the press to be some of our greatest allies in helping get the message out.
You know, Arma brings up the discussion we had last week about the social media connection. So this is another example of where something quick is happening and we want to make sure the people are informed.
Good point.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
What's the website? Is it on the town?
Town website.
Something specific under conservation or under the regular, under the regular web page?
It's been on the main page, but it's also under community planning, I believe, and conservation.
If it is on the main page, it's available.
Correct.
You issued a budget letter to the department heads, which I want the public to hear, but we've got two very patient gentlemen who've been waiting, and they have to get up in the morning. So, Mr. Barkley, Mike Barkley has, is a member of the advisory committee and sitting with Mike, is the chairman of the advisory committee, Greg McKeon. And they had taken off, as they do periodically, to review, to review the financial policy of the town, which was established about three years ago. And was appropriate, it was an interim, and I want to mention that, it was an interim financial policy. And they, a group of the advisory committee members have been reviewing that. So if I could ask Mr. Barkley and Mr. McKeon to come up and-
Second inning, that's right, top of the second still, two outs.
Does anybody have the score for the phone?
It's 0-0, top of the second, man on first.
Talk fast.
I'll do, I'll do my best.
Talk about social media.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Selectman Louder and Selectman Healy for having us. My name is Mike Barkley, 11 Cottage Street. I'm a member of the advisory committee. Earlier this year, after June 30th, a subcommittee was appointed, five members. I was selected to be the, or asked to be the chair of that committee to review the financial policy that was established in 2010. As many of you may recall, that policy was more or less a direct result of the town being put on negative watch by the rating agencies after the, in the middle of the crisis. And the charter, we were fortunate in that the policy that was written in 2010 was a very well-thought-out, comprehensive policy. So our job, part of that policy is that it has to be reviewed every three years. And we approached it more as evolution rather than revolution when we were looking at it. As you may know, there are three sections of the policy. The first is financial management, the second relates to capital expenditures, and then the third relates to debt service. And by and large, the section we spent the most time on was the financial management section. I believe you all have copies of the draft that was approved at the advisory committee meeting Tuesday evening. You may also have a redline copy as well. We, when, really at the end of the day, what we tried to do is, okay, unfortunately, I thought that-
I apologize, I did it, Ed, I just didn't make the folder, I'm getting it right now.
Okay, okay. To the extent that there are changes, you know, we tried to go through and just really tighten up the language, be consistent. It is a policy, you know, so as such, it's meant to have flexibility, not be prescriptive in nature per se, and, you know, be a roadmap for how we think about our financial affairs today, tomorrow, and into the future. And one of the, the first bullets is to, is to basically preserve the town's credit rating. And this is really a, you know, something that the rating agencies can look at and get a sense of how we're thinking about managing the town's financial policy. And so the big, really, we met four times as subcommittee over the summer and reviewed each one of the sections. And there were no changes really, other than some minor word changes in the debt service and capital, capital parts of the policy. But the big part of the financial management section relates to the reserves. And specifically, if you look at the document, the Moody's document from 2009 that is on the town's website, it talks about why we were put on negative watch. And it specifically references that the reserves, between the time we were awarded AAA in 2002 to 2009, the reserves had fallen significantly. And that was really seemed to be the main sticking point of the rating agencies. And so the document that was done in 2010 was to try to set a plan together to get those reserves, which bottomed at a little under 9% of the operating expenses, but had been over 20% when we were awarded the AAA in 2002. So the document that was written in 2010 set a range of 14% to 18% as the goal for unrestricted reserves. As you all know, there's a general reserve number, but that has some buckets in it that are specifically assigned. What the policy references is the unrestricted. So our liquidity, sort of our savings in the bank that allow us to, if we need to draw on those reserves. So we discussed it for a long time. We looked at comparable Massachusetts, you know, basically all the AAA rated towns in Massachusetts. And also, it's interesting that the letter that Moody's wrote in 2009, though, when it talks about our reserve levels, it doesn't compare them to the state median, it compares them to the national median. And when you look, the latest data that we have from Moody's, the national median's about twice as high as the state median. So the state median, and this is as of early 2012, was about 9.8%, I believe, was the percentage. But if you look at the national median, it's almost 19%. So we spent a lot of time talking about it, and it was decided that we would raise the range for unrestricted reserves from 14% to 18% to 16% to 20% with a bullet point that also states that if we get over 20% in unrestricted reserves, it's a trigger to begin discussion amongst the various bodies in town, should we do something with that, those reserves above and beyond the 20%, whether it be tax relief or paying down debt or paying off long-term liabilities. So that, in a nutshell, is what we've done. The draft you have before you is approved by the advisory committee. And as you, as you probably know, you know, this is, you know, whatever we do is in discussion with the selectmen as well as the school committee. And we will be taking it to the school committee sometime in the near future, and we're hoping to get a final, you know, final edition approved before the budgeting season begins.
Okay, thank you. Greg, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just thank Mike and other members of the team for their hard work in putting this together. I think it's a good document. And just to reinforce what the timeline is, so we, the advisory committee approved the draft the other night, and now we're exposing it to the other constituencies, primarily the Boris Selectman, town administrator, and the school committee, who are influenced by what's in that policy, to get their input as well. And then, once we've solicited that input, considered it, there may be some adjustments as a result of that. We'll issue a final policy. We're targeting, hopefully, before Thanksgiving, but certainly before the budget season.
So if we took two weeks to review this and-
Yeah, I think we're actually looking at, I think we have a meeting tentatively scheduled for the 19th.
Okay.
And that would be the target date.
So that would give us time. If I may, I want to thank Michael because during this whole process, he made a concerted effort, and we played telephone tag a few times, but to make sure that we talked regularly on the four meetings that he mentioned. And as a result of his conversations with me and my attendance at a couple of the committee meetings, I had an opportunity to talk to some outside financial experts who were in the municipal arena. The most principled one for the benefit of my colleagues is Richard Totor, who is our financial advisor. Richard gave a document to the committee, and in that document, he established for the general level, that's all of the funny, restricted and unrestricted, as a 20% as a floor. What he said to me on the phone was, AAA rating towns in the northeast are in the 20% to 23% range on the general level. And to Mike's specific question and comment about the unrestricted number- And to Mike's specific question and comment about the unrestricted number, this is something new under Gatsby 54, if I remember, where they are now breaking that total reserve fund out into subcomponents. And what I asked Richard was, is the... Is that unrestricted number, does it have a target? The committee was focused on, how much should the unrestricted be? And what Richard said to me is that the unrestricted number should be as high as you can get it, but most towns are in the 60% to 70% range of the total numbers. So that's a good... So we're there. That's a good number. But it was interesting that he said they don't have a target in the accounting world yet. So I think I would like the town to know we're... I'm very comfortable with the fact that we're, once again, leading the curve to kind of get ahead of where the rating agencies might be when they look at our financial status. And he made some comments that, to your comment, Mike, was, this is typical of Hingham. You're ahead of the curve. You're always looking at yourself to be better than you were before, and that, don't think that the rating agencies don't pay attention to this. The fact that you do that is a reflection of the entire financial management team that we have in place, and they said they pay attention. Nobody else is doing this. You're ahead of it, and that's a good thing. Interesting that the discussion that we had at the committee was, is 20 a good number? Or, I think it was Mary Power at the meeting who educated me about the unrestricted from her experience, and focusing on that, and I'm very happy to see that's where you ended up, because that's what they're looking at. So I think to the public and to my colleagues, I was very impressed with... I mean, now, I know Richard a long time, and I know we pay him, so I have to... We pay him something, but he was very forthright in his comments and the fact that we pay attention to this level of detail, and that's a result of a lot of people doing this, so...
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would just say that, again, one of the things is this policy is reviewed every three years. So what we do here, you know, this year is not locked in for eternity. I would also say, though, that there is uncertainty around, in light of the bankruptcy in Detroit, there's a lot of uncertainty about what the rating agencies are going to do, and both Moody's and S&amp;P are in the midst of refining how they look at municipalities. And, you know, we... Richard's letter references that we're one of two towns that have AAA from all three of the rating agencies. And, you know, so to me, and this is, you know, my personal opinion, but, you know, we're not playing just to be, you know, in the pack. We're playing to be in front of the pack, and, you know, certainly, you know, Richard's letter mentions specifically long-term liabilities, you know, given what happened in Detroit as being a focus of the rating agencies. But, you know, certainly, the reserve fund is, you know, that's our liquidity, and the future's uncertain, and you have to have money in the bank to deal with unforeseen problems, and you never know when the rating agencies might change their mind, too.
In fact, Michael, he used a word, and I think I shared this with you, he used the word flexibility. Because we have a... I said, should we have a specific target, or should we have a range? And this, he repeated the discussion we had three years ago, which is have a range, and both in the restricted, and, I mean, the total and in the unrestricted, because that gives you the flexibility for the unforeseen, so that you don't get penalized if, for some reason, you decide, I can't be at 20, I've got to be at 18 or 19 for good business town reasons. So that's... He said that's one of the issues that they commend us for.
And we were at 15.7% on the unrestricted as of fiscal year 2012. We haven't seen the number for fiscal 2013. I would guess it's over 16% if I had to. And, you know, the other thing, though, that he did mention in the letter, and this was as of 12 data, was that our funding status of 69% of our post-retirement benefits was adequate. I would guess that that's higher as well.
Pension.
Pension. Pension. Was adequate at 69%. I would venture, given the market's been up and things like that, we're higher than 69. But, you know, one of the things I think we have to be mindful to... Mindful of is that the assumptions we're allowed to make, you know, on the discount rate in particular of 8% is not necessarily real for the current rate environment. And if that was to move to 6%, for instance, that would have a big impact on what the funding status was, or if the market pulled back and our assets fell. So the post-retirement liabilities is a very tricky one, and pension accounting is complicated. But very small moves and assumptions can move the funding status a lot, and so it's just something to...
Thank you, Michael, because he did... You asked me to check with him in the discussion, the OPEB number. We were one of the first towns to deal with that, and Irma was chair of the advisory at the time. And that caught recognition. I know it was a lot of angst for some of us to try to figure out how to pay for that, but the fact that we are is a good thing. And to your comment, Michael asked me to find out, what does the word adequate mean in terms of a pension funding? And Richard very clearly said, well, it's not too bad, but it's not too good. So that is an area where we have to pay attention to make sure that the pension is there.
It's adequate, and we're not looking to be inadequate, right? So...
So I'm sorry, Michael and I have been having a dialogue, so I'll open it up. Irma?
In the interest of time, because everybody's one foot out the door. Michael, thank you very much for... And the team, Greg, and the whole team. This hadn't been updated since... I'm going to get the date right now. 1983? When was Peter Key here?
1991 to 93 was when the advisory committee took up the first revision.
And that was Peter Key here.
And then, three years ago, the advisory committee took it up a second time. And so I think, you know, I would commend the advisory committee to begin this every three years. Certainly, Moody's is interested in that.
And then also...
I know two other rating agencies have similar views of regular updates.
And I think three... Every three years, or sooner if necessary, I think is great. And I also want to thank Sue Nickerson for putting out every year the document that shows us what's in the reserves, because that is, with great clarity, where we should be, and then a much better way of figuring out the percents. But thank you all very much. This was really good.
I would just like to thank you gentlemen for the considerable expertise you bring to this discussion. Seriously.
No, that's good. Okay, so what I will suggest to my colleagues, that November 7th, we'll have an opportunity to review this and then put it on the vote list for that night with any modifications, so that you'll have something in hand, if that's agreeable.
And then, if you all make any modifications, let us know.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's kind of a good segue while you're here. Ted, you sent a letter out to the department heads, and just briefly, in the interest of birding the baseball.
Sure. This year, I asked the departments to prepare one budget. Now, it's the first year in, I think, the last six years the departments haven't produced multiple budget scenarios. So this year, we asked them to produce a level services budget. It's a budget that's meant to allow for step increases, degree changes, other known changes that could affect inflationary... Changes that could affect the level of expenditures, increased maintenance contract costs, for example. And overall, increased costs needed to meet the same level of service. So if a particular department has had a significant increase in service, and they can document that clearly, and they needed added personnel to meet that same level of service, that would be considered a level services budget. Generally, we don't see too much of that, you know, in terms of added personnel to meet the demands, as our operations tend not to fluctuate that much from year to year. But specifically, asked the departments to give us any additional requests. So if departments felt that they're underserving, and they'd like to increase their service levels, or they have a new project or a new area they want to move into, that... We do that through the new funding forms that we've used in the past, but what that'll do is allow the board, myself, and then ultimately the board and advisory, to focus more of their attention on what's changing in the budget. We've been through this budget so detailed for the last five or six years now that I think most people are pretty comfortable with the numbers we have within them. We scrubbed them back, Irma, when you were chair on advisory, we scrubbed them with zero-based budgeting for three consecutive years. We went through every department. So I think now it can allow policy boards like yourself and advisory to focus their limited time on, you know, what's new in the budget, and how are we going to allocate limited resources among a fairly large amount of demands for those resources. And that's essentially what the budget is, picking and choosing where you want to spend your money.
Okay. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this? Okay. Well, I thank you both, and I thank Greg, you, for your participation in the executive session. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. We have some minutes, which we traditionally approve at the beginning, but in the interest of... I guess I had one foot in the batter's box, so...
These are going to be quick, I have a feeling.
That's all right, okay. Let's see, Irma, you want to go first?
Sure. Move to approve the minutes of October 3, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have had a discussion to get a Plymouth County Study Committee together, and we have four people whom we've identified. There is another opening, and I would ask my colleagues, let's vote the four so they can get started. And then, if there's another candidate, we want to add to the group, to make an odd-numbered group, so that we can make sure that differences are addressed. But I'd like to confirm this, so they can get started on their...
Maybe a call out to the residents, that if anyone would like to be on this committee, because we haven't been able to find that fifth person.
That's good. Thank you, Ted. So Paul, if you would entertain a motion on the Plymouth County Study Committee?
I'll move to appoint Michael Holden, Scott Ford, Jim Claypool, and Jane Mommy to the Plymouth County Study Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to sign an employment contract with the town accountant.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Up.
Do you want me to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license for Morris Sullivan for the annual holiday wine tasting at the South Shore Conservatory of Music on Saturday, November 2, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just before we do the... Randy put in his recommendation for the Eastern Minerals Salt Contract, and it's interesting, just as I glanced through it, that the price of salt, rock salt, is down. That's a good thing. Okay, so, let's see, whose turn is it? Is it mine? Yours or...
Make a motion to sign a contract with Eastern Minerals Incorporated to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works, Rock Salt, Solar D, LVD, and CCD, LVD, for the sum of $47.20 per ton.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Just a question, Mr. Alexiadis, why aren't we buying all the rock salt from one vendor as opposed to two?
Isn't the second vote, is it different?
We move our purchases among... Based on quantity in different companies. So we can't get all of it from one.
Okay.
So that's why we have the two.
I'll move, then, we sign a contract with International Salt Company to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works, Rock Salt, CCD apostrophe LVD, $47.78 a ton.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Last vote.
Actually, there's two. I move to waive the permit fee for a greenhouse to be installed in the courtyard of the high school.
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Irma, you want to make the...
I move to appoint Richard Cook as the alternate member of the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there anything else?
One small thank you.
Sure.
Because I'll forget it. I want to thank Keith German for the wonderful Herbert Foss memorial service that took place a couple Saturdays ago. I also want to recognize the Veterans Council and the police honor guard, and members of Herbert Foss's family who were there.
Very good. Yeah, I was sorry, I couldn't attend that. I had a previous family commitment, but I understand it very well, so thank you for representation.
He does a terrific job.
He does, Keith. Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Town Administrator?
In the interest of brevity, no.
In the interest of the baseball game?
All right, I'll take... Entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you on November 7.
Second. Or motion, so move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Good night, and stay safe.